The County Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. The Honorable Mayor Jeff Mason presiding.
Thank you. Connor, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Lord, we thank you for this today. Thank you for the blessings that you've given us. Lord, first and foremost, we thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, and making a way for salvation. We thank you for your blessings on each and every one of us, Lord. Thankful for this Christmas season and whatever represents Father. I pray you would bless us tonight, Lord, and every member of county government as we seek and plead with you to make wise decisions on behalf of our friends, family, and peers here in the county, and that you would just always direct our paths. We pray you bless this evening and everything that goes on. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where its standards, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. This roll call, Miss Stacy?
Chris Nixon. Helen Vose.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Stephanie McHale. Scotty Barrett.
Here.
Matt Inyard.
Here.
Erica Ebel. Cordell Smith.
Here.
Danny Irazari.
Here.
Stephen Leish.
Here.
Eddie Stout.
Here.
Casey Elrod.
Here.
Justin Malden.
Here.
Bill Reese. Tommy Bane. Junior Fields.
Here.
Connor McDonald.
Here.
Tim Baylor.
Here.
Danny Huff.
Here.
Ed De La Rosa.
Here.
Eighteen present. All right, eighteen present, okay. Item number five is the approval of the minutes of the October 10th, 2022 County Commission meeting. You've all been, gave a copy of that at this time. If there, I would take a motion if there's no corrections that need to be made, to take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Connor McDonald on the motion, Stacy on the second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number six, Ms. Martha Holliday and her board of the Pregnancy Help Center is here tonight to kind of talk about what they're doing and how you can help with them. So, Ms. Martha, come ahead and...
Is there a way to dim the lights for these things?
That I don't know, it's real, that's...
While he's taking care of the lights, I'd like to introduce the members of our board that are here tonight. We have Robert and Amy Wagner and Michael Mayner. Michael, be preparing because I'm going to call you up when it's time for the Treasurers event. But I'm from the, Martha Holliday, from the Pregnancy Help Center of Smith County, and I want to thank you for having me visit. I'm certainly honored to be here. I'll do my best to explain what we do at the center, and then I'll give you an opportunity for questions. I always like to start my reading Psalm 139, 3 through 16. For you created my inmost being; you knit me together in my mother's womb. I praise you because I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Your works are wonderful; I know that full well. My fr- excuse me, my frame was not hidden from you when I was made in the secret place, when I was woven together in the depths of the earth. Your eyes saw my unformed body; all my days were ordained for me. I can't read, I'm sorry. Were written in your book before one of them came to be. I was trying to correct that, I've got a misspelling on there, and as a retired teacher, that bothers me, so it was throwing me off. But anyway, Psalm 139 is kind of what we go by at the Pregnancy Help Center. We are a Christ-centered ministry, offering life-affirming compassionate care to families. We are available to help clients understand the choices available to them and to educate parents in parenting skill. We do support in a nonjudgmental manner. We have a Learn to Earn program, which is offered by Brock Course, and there are spiritual applications. You can't see this really well, but this will give you a little... Uh oh. Matthew, don't get too far away. How do I get it back?
Just click on it. Over the right side.
Okay. I wish you could see what classes we actually do offer, but there are several parenting classes. Thank you, can you get more too? Okay. Well, we have several parenting classes that we offer that are available to the parents as well as Bible studies. What services do we provide? We have adoption and abortion counseling. We do peer counseling. We provide free pregnancy tests. We have abstinence education. I work closely with the Family Youth Network with Ms. Barbara Canapple, and then we do a jail ministry here on Tuesday nights. We do referral services for insurance. One of the first things I ask the clients when they come in is, are you insured? And if not, we start looking for options for them. We work closely with the Stevens Center, with the Chant Program at the Health Department. We work with DCS, with infant removal necessities. We work with Head Start, the WIC program, the Juvenile Community Services. I've had the blessing today to be at the Emmanuel House and get lots of good snuggles from a three-day-old baby. That's one of the favorite parts of my job, is getting to do that, and I love working. I love our ministry, but I love the ministry of the Emmanuel House as well. We work with the Foster Care Program. I'm a member of the Health Council, and then we work with the food banks and the Smith County Help Center. I love to host youth groups and churches. Tours are always available. I want you to come to the center. I would love for you to come to the center and see what we do there. Take a tour, see what's going on. Some days you may walk in and there may be boxes and donations, you know, three feet high. Other days, it's kind of smooth. And how are we funded? We are 100% private funding. We have a fish fry, a duck derby. How many of you got in on the duck derby? Anybody do that this year? Have fun with that. We have a banquet. We take donations that are tax-deductible. We take checks, cash, PayPal, Venmo, Square, any way you can give us money, we'll take it. We also do monthly automatic drafts, and then we have a baby bottom ministry. And Michael, would you talk at this time and let me see if I can get myself together? Robert refused to come, so I have to get you.
So I've been the treasurer now for, going on almost five years. I'm in, we have served a three-year term. I'm on the second part of that term, and then we have to come off the board for a year. So this will be my last year in 2023, and then I have to come off. We have, when we came on, we have been so blessed, and one of the reasons why Martha wanted to get out in front of you guys is that we still believe that the word is not getting out to people in Smith County. As a father of six, I tracked down the Pregnancy Help Center just to see, you know, what we could do to provide and help out, and just in this last year, the community help and just get the word out, and that's the biggest thing, is people on the Gorgsville side, a lot of times they didn't even hear about us. So we're just trying to do our part. So, I don't have numbers in front of you, but this has been a pretty good year for us as well to raise, but like Martha says, getting the word out, letting people know that we're here to help families, so.
What about our monthly income?
I don't, oh man, I do not, yeah. Oh yeah, it was about, roughly, it's about 2,500 a month is what we look for to sustain the facility.
So monetary donations are always appreciated. All right, what can you do to help? Please pray for our clients, that God would send more clients to the center and for us to have wisdom, unwavering faith, and endurance as we serve them. You can help provide residual or monthly income, and tell others about our ministry. Now that you know, tell somebody else. All right, any questions? Thank you, Mayor, for having me here.
Thank you for coming.
Who's he? Uh oh. Sounds like they're not supposed to sing.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you guys are doing.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, in your package you also have an update from the Smith County Highway Department. You look over that. Mickey is here if you've got any questions. I do know that the cold rainy weather has got him probably down till, as far as tiring and chipping till, I think we said other day, April, till it gets hot again, so. But he is working, they're working every day and doing what they can, so. Thank you for that. All right, we have to fill in a seat in the District III vacancy. We, there was nobody qualified for the August election and no one qualified for the November, so it comes back to you guys to appoint someone to fill that seat. So at this time, is there anyone here that would like to stand and make themselves known to be nominated?
I'm Stephanie Winfrey. I gave out my resume to you guys. I would like to join the County Commission because I have a passion for helping community continue to grow, and my biggest passion is education. I know that you guys work some with the school board on things, but I also like to just help the business community grow.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to be?
My name is Ron Paschal. I live over at Alexander Avenue, but a little between Alexander and Brush Creek, I'm around that side of the county. I'd like to be considered as a Commissioner of District III.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, I would take nominations now.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Paschal.
Okay. I have a nomination for...
I'd like to nominate this one group.
Okay, I have a nomination for Ron Paschal and one for Ms. Stephanie Winfrey. All right, seeing that both have been nominated, we will do a roll call vote, and you answer by which one you would like to be on the Commission.
Start with three.
Start with District 14.
Is this for a full term, Mayor?
Actually, probably just, I think the way it's usually, it will be a two-year term because they will have to run again in August of 24.
Twelve.
Scotty Barrett.
Paschal.
Helen Vose.
Ms. Winfrey.
Terry Givens.
Mr. Paschal.
Billy Bass.
Mr. Paschal.
Greta Kirby.
Mr. Paschal.
Charles Kent.
Mr. Paschal.
Matt Inyard.
Ms. Winfrey.
Cordell Smith.
Mr. Paschal.
Danny Irazari.
Mr. Paschal.
Stephen Leish.
Mr. Paschal.
Eddie Stout.
Mr. Paschal.
Casey Elrod.
Mr. Paschal.
Justin Malden.
Ms. Winfrey.
Junior Fields.
Mr. Paschal.
Connor McDonald.
Mr. Paschal.
Tim Baylor.
Mr. Paschal.
Danny Huff.
Mr. Paschal.
Ed De La Rosa.
Mr. Paschal.
Mr. Paschal is hereby appointed with 15 votes. Thank you, Ms. Winfrey, for coming, and thank you, Mr. Paschal, and welcome aboard. So we got that done. Okay, number seven, amendments and amendments to the agenda and the approval agenda. One thing that we need to take off the agenda is Resolution 122205, that is the speed limit reduction resolution. Did talk with T-Dot today, finally got some info from those guys, and we do not have the power by resolution or ordinance to change the speed limit on a state road, so we can ask for a study to be done, and they will do that study, and then they will recommend a speed for that, but that's the only way that that can be done. We can't by resolution or ordinance can do that, so that's where we stand with that. All right, and then also, I will need a motion to approve Mr. Paschal for Committee B for the January meetings, and then I will need, it seems something that we got late and didn't get to you is where Joey Nixon came off the Ag Committee because of his not longer being on the Commission. Matt Inyard has agreed to serve on that committee, and then in here, once the drug council is passed, if that passes, then I would ask that Cordell Smith be nominated and approved to hold that position on that council. So at this time, if there's no other amendments to the agenda, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, your agenda is approved. Item number eight is the County Mayor Report on the TDEC water grants that we approved back in September or October, I can't remember, it's been so long. I think it was October. Did get word last week that their plans are to have all the approvals done by January and hopefully contracts to us by February. And as soon as that approved, as soon as we get those approved and that contract, we will get a PO started on the stormwater study that we agreed to fund out of that program. Update on the road study, I did talk to Jeff Monatra today. They're hoping to have, they have all their preliminary site work, they've sent it on to the people that compile that data and put it into a usable form. They think that they should have all that to us by the end of January, is what he told me today, maybe earlier than that, but that's their plan. Update on the radio system from the last meeting. It was determined by David Adley that the current routers would not allow the two-way traffic that he wanted to program in, so new routers, 911 purchased new routers, they're supposed to be in this week, they will get them installed and get them reprogrammed, and hopefully I'll have you a better update for that in January. Kid Central, we've talked about that in Steering Committee B. I'm meeting with Rec Concepts tomorrow, and there's a construction guide to discuss the construction demo process, if we move it up, if we swap the tennis courts with that, getting an estimate on how, what new tennis courts will cost for that as well. I think it was since we've met, I can't remember the exact date, but Mickey, Daisy, April, and I attended a grants conference at Cogger Engineering. We learned a lot, but not sure anything that helps us immediately on the grant side for roads. It was stated that the road and the stormwater studies were a big help when applying for the grants, but we learned they are a long-term commitment to get applied for and approved, so we learned a lot and going to work on some of those. Preliminary engineering work has been done on getting the sewer line run to Station One ambulance and the new sheriff's building down here, so got that going on. If that's all, I've got this tonight. Any questions for me? Seeing none, you have your financial reports, your cash flows, and some of your financial statements. If you have any questions, Ms. Daisy is here to answer them. Seeing none, is your committee reports, you have a copy of those. You do have appointments to the Smith County Library Board before you do that, page 20 nine. And that is putting Ms. Greta Kirby as the County Commission member of that board. Yes, sir?
Yes, I just had a quick question about the financial reports.
Oh, okay.
It's on page seven, and it's under the month of April, so it's probably projected.
Yeah.
And it's 96,541, and it's showing under transferred in, and I was just wondering what that was.
So the county takes, the general fund takes in transfers from the 207 Southwest Fund and the Highway 131 Fund. Those were, those were budgeted for originally when the creation of the Finance Department came about. It was agreed that both funds should contribute to support the expenses that the Finance Office has.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So that comes in the month of April every year?
It's just according to, we watch the cash flow of the other funds, and it's a matter of really us creating and then we're supposed to that getting those supervised and sign off, and just writing a check from one fund to the other, so it can really be anytime.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, back to the Library Board appointments. Ms. Greta Kirby will serve the County Commission seat on the Library Board, and Ms. Jeanette Moss is the other nominee for the Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would take a motion to approve those appointments.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? The second came from Mr. Billy. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, we will... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's done. All right, item B is our official statutory bonds for this year. You'll see, anybody that deals with money has to have that statutory bond. Just, I need a motion to approve those bonds.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Ches, second.
Second.
Second, Justin Malden, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions on that statutory bond? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call, Miss Stacy? Since it includes money.
Helen Vose.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Irazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Tim Baylor.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you. Item C is a presentation of a library CD bid opening that was done by the Trustees Office, that's just for your information. All right, item D is resolutions. Resolution 082201 is a budget amendment that was already, that was passed in August. There were some totals found that were not correct. Daisy fixed those totals and is putting it back before you to approve that again, just to be...
Yeah, there's no changes to any of the body of information, it's only the totals involved. No reference, actually, I received that copy from the court for the office, and that never, that's when I found it, it's when our standard copy came back, and so it's just correct in the totals, the budget amendments all remain the same, line to line.
All right, seeing none, I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Matt Inyard.
Second.
Second, Connor McDonald, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, roll call, Miss Stacy?
Helen Vose.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett. Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Irazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Tim Baylor.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you. All right, Resolution 122201, 02 and 03 are our regular budget amendments that come before us every month. They're all passed through Steering A with positive recommendations. At this time, we can vote on them individually or we can group.
Motion to group, second. Approved.
I have a motion and a second to group and approve. Tim Baylor and Casey was the second. I have a motion and a second to group and approve. Is there any questions or discussion on these budget amendments? All right, seeing none, we will do a roll call, Miss Stacy?
Helen Vose.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Irazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Tim Baylor.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you. All right, item number five, Resolution 122204 is a resolution amending Resolution 0620216, and that is to change the location of our regular meetings from the Court and Facilities Meeting to the Ag Center. This was approved by a Steering Committee as well. At this time, I would take a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion to approve.
All right, second. That was Casey? Justin, I have a motion and a second to approve that. Any questions or discussions on this resolution? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call, Miss Stacy, that way we can get a true count.
Helen Vose.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Irazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
No.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Tim Baylor.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Seventeen yeses. Seventeen and one, yes, that motion, that resolution passes. All right, item six, we struck... Item number seven is Resolution 202206, and that is asking the Planning Commission to do a review of the official zoning ordinance of Smith County, Tennessee pertaining to the dog and cat kennel regulations. You have a copy of that in your packet, item number 69. And what that does is that sends that back to the Planning Commission for them to look at it and decide if they want to make changes or not. They can make changes and send it back to you, or they can send it back to you, no changes, and at that point in time, the Commission would have the opportunity to make changes or keep it the way it is. So at this time, I would take a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion to approve.
Justin.
Second.
Second, Matt, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussions on this resolution? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call, Miss Stacy?
Helen Bowes.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
No.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
No.
Danny Ozzari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Tim Keller.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
No.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Resolution passes 15 to 3. I will present it to the Planning Commission at their January meeting and update you from there. All right. Resolution number eight is a Resolution 122207. It establishes the Smith County Administrative Council on opioid settlement fund. I don't know how many of you have followed along with the news or all that, but there was lawsuits, upon lawsuits, and lawsuits suing drug manufacturers, drug stores, drug chains. So there were settlements. The money has started to percolate out. I think we've received some already. There's a schedule that it could go from this year to possibly a payout over 20 years, is best we could tell. So it could be $100,000 this year and $6,000 next year. We don't know. There's no, I mean, we're slowly getting information. Jeremy's been on the phone with their attorneys. And so we do have some money. We've, we decided the best thing we could do is kind of create a, the state put together a council for their money, decide how they want to deviate that money. And so that's what we kind of came up with, was a committee to look at that and help in determining how to distribute that money. I don't know if they will, if it'll be something ready to go as far as spending by the first of the year, or it could be six, eight months down the road. It's just something that this committee will take, or this council will take up and look at and try to determine the best use for that money. It will include the County Mayor, the Town of Carthage Mayor, Town of Gorsel Mayor, Town of South Carthage Mayor, the General Sessions Judge, Director of Probation and Recovery Court, and one County Commissioner. So that's that. At this time, I would take a motion to approve this council.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion and a second. Connor was in motion, Matt was the second. All right, any other questions or discussions on this council resolution? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call.
Helen Bowes.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Scotty Barrett.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Ozzari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.[1584.85]